So that works. Yep, that works fine for us. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Beekman's Planning Board meeting. If you'll all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll also just please take notice of the exits, we have one here and one there. Has the members of the board had a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting?
Yes, I have.
All right. A vote to approve the minutes?
Also move.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Very good. So tonight we have... Sure. Okay. So this evening we have... Good evening, Pete. Good to see you. So tonight we have a public hearing about a subdivision. I'd just like to thank you. Before I introduce the architect representing the applicant, some rules of the road with a public hearing is that please sign in. There's a sign-in paper in the back on the table. When you come to the podium, and it is important for you to come to the podium, say your name and your address, all right, so it can be heard and recorded in the minutes. And if you can, please confine yourself to three minutes, all right? We will be listening. I'll be taking notes, and after you're done speaking, and we've heard other individuals, we'll respond to your questions. All right?
I have a couple of quick things, really quick, before you open it up, Mr. Chairman. First, Adam, do you have green cards and proof of the advertising, or did you give that to Colleen directly?
Those were delivered to Colleen on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, the name of the subdivision has had a minor change. It's now Subdivision of Depot Hill, which is for the Trust for Public Land. This was because there's been a Great Hollow subdivision before, and so we didn't want to have future conflict with names of matching subdivision name.
Okay. Do you want to get quick some over first? Please, introduce yourself and...
Good evening. I'm Adam Thibert from Insight Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture, PC, here representing the Trust for Public Land in the subdivision of the property known as Depot Hill on Great Hollow Road. For the benefit of the board and the public, this project involves the subdivision of the subject lot only. There'll be two lots, Lot 1, but Lot 1 will be 12 acres and will remain under its current use and current ownership. Lot 2 will be the larger portion to the north of Lot 1, will be part of a broader project in this area to preserve open space. As discussed during the Camp Luddington subdivision proceedings and the last time we were here for this subdivision, this is part of a bigger project that's being undertaken by the Trust for Public Land to preserve a large swath of the Depot Hill area by purchasing several contiguous lots and transferring ownership to the New York State DEC for preservation. There are no improvements associated with this project, just the creation of a new property line so that the Lot 2, the one portion of the lot, can be preserved. Since we were here last with the board, we responded to the far majority of Mr. Kohler's comments, and will be responding to the latest round that we received earlier today. We would like to formally request the waiver mentioned in Dan's comment letter of Chapter 130-20A6. As we just put to bed the interest in seeing additional detail, there's things in there about trees and so on. We understand that this is a very large site with no improvements, so we'd formally request the waiver of that provision. And other than that, I would turn it over to the board and the hall for questions, comments.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would ask is if you can just put that in writing for us on that, the waiver request, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the public hearing is now open. Anybody who would like to speak about this application, please approach the podium.
Can you come up, please state your name, so I could... Can you hear me?
Mr. Crane, please.
John, that list that I gave you were people that wanted to...
To speak?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You must be... Speak on this one.
My name is Bill Crane. I live at 254 Gardner Hollow Road. I have come to speak strongly in favor of this project. It will preserve open space. It will preserve our natural environment, trees, habitats for wildlife, streams. It's something that will help us retain the rural character of our town, which is a goal of our comprehensive plan. It will help bring in, make it an attractive place for visitors who want to come, and will ultimately help our taxes because it will bring in people from the city who would let them enjoy our peaceful, serene rustic environment. It's a very good proposal, and I hope it succeeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Next on the list is Ken Casella.
Just put it on there.
Oh, okay, so I won't go down this list. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak about this preservation of land that is going through a subdivision process for the purposes of creating a larger Going once?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
No, hold on. We have to keep the public hearing open because we're still waiting on our lead agencies to get back to us. We have to adjourn it, but we have to keep it open for now.
So what we'll be doing is we're waiting for responses from lead agencies, and we're going to adjourn the meeting until September 15th?
September 15th.
September 15th. If I can have a motion to adjourn this meeting to September 15th?
So move.
All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just put in a couple of questions/requests. Given the fact that the public hearing is being adjourned to next month, is there the potential for a resolution to be prepared, a draft resolution to be prepared for consideration, assuming the public hearing is closed during the next meeting?
That's up to you. I mean, we still have to do seeker. We'd have to run through the preliminary and the final content on the map as well, so...
And I think one other item was, have you met with the building department or planning department in the Town Hall? Because I know there is that parcel, a piece of the parcel where the municipal line was...
Right, no, we have not approached them directly. My understanding was that that was municipality of municipality. Should we be engaging the Town Hall?
I think it would be helpful. More than likely, they're going to say, well, we defer to the Town of Beekman, but I'm just considering the size of the parcels in Beekman. But I think it may be helpful. The other thing you may want to do, because we were talking about this earlier, is check with the county clerk's office about the sufficiency of your map and whether or not they're going to want it signed by the Town of Pauling. Sometimes they get picky about that, but I want to see it, you know, you go through this whole process for the county clerk to check their map or the Town of Pauling not signing it. So I just think those two things might be helpful to you by next month.
Okay. And we can discuss it maybe, you know, after the meeting or in between, just in terms of what exactly it is I'm presenting to the Town of Pauling. We just sending a courtesy submission of the current map and documents, or are we making some requests?
It may be more of a like, hey, do you want an application on this, or do you want to defer? Because again, they're going to be part of the process anyway, but you approaching them and us approaching them, you'll get an answer one way or another.
Yeah, the map shows lands that are within the Town of Pauling, right? And in my experience with the county clerk, there certainly may be asking for two different signatures on the map. And then if you only had Beekman's signature, and then they say you have to go get Pauling's signature, then the timeframe is going to lapse on you for the Beekman side, and then we'd have to get everything re-signed again. So just to be preemptive, it would be wise for you to go to the county clerk and see if...
Sounds to me to start there and then pursue a discussion with the Town of Pauling.
Yeah, that would probably...
Probably makes most sense.
Yeah, and then that way, if the Town of Pauling does make you go through, whether it's a short or regular process for subdivision, we wouldn't think that they would, but they may.
Were they notified of the public hearing?
Yes.
I think that... I may be mistaken, but I think that notification covers it as though they were a budding landowner.
Yeah.
Signature.
They've got, there's a couple of different things going on here. There's a parallel situation, so the lead agency circulation because they're adjacent municipality right there, and there's land within the Town of Pauling, so they were included in the lead agency circulation. And then there's a 239 general municipal law circulation, which has just allowed to allow them to notice that we're going to have a public hearing here, and that has to be 10 days prior to the public hearing that they're noticed. So part of the reason why we're waiting for some responses to make sure that everything, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so...
Yeah, Dan, I understand, but I assume they were notified of this public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, they were.
Yep. Just so, to answer your question, I'm prepared for us to move forward. I feel like this project can move forward as quickly as we can get our paperwork done. So respecting their time and their to get the seeker done, whatever we need to do to move the project forward, I have no problem with.
So, Dan, assuming that this happens with Pauling, anything stopping us from voting on a resolution that will be prepared based on...
Right now, we have assumed that there's no objection to us acting as lead agency, then we can do our seeker, then we would be able to do a preliminary, conditional, final, but...
We should wait then till the next...
I think we should know a little bit more.
Okay.
Worst case, it puts you out to the October meeting.
Right. Okay, all right.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We look forward to this.
We actually closed the public hearing.
Well, we adjourned it.
You're welcome to talk to the applicant outside if you want, if he's okay with it.
Or you can come back next month.
Yeah, because it will be open again next month, the public hearing. Thank you. The next item on the agenda under discussion is Volt charging LLC. Do you have a chance to see the signs? They incorporated the wood down there. Yes. Wait. We had the... This is, actually, I think yes, we did. What we're doing now is approval of signs. And, yeah, different ways.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Dean Apostolares. I'm here on behalf of the application for Volt charging, where we are installing two electric vehicle charging stations at the local Stop &amp; Shop Grocery Store on Beekman Road. We have been before the planning board a few times prior, so I'll briefly just give you a quick synopsis of our scope of improvements here for the charging stations. Here you can see we are proposing two Level 2 electric vehicle charging stations along the front drive aisle at the local Stop &amp; Shop. These charging stations include dual-sided media screens that are approximately 48 inches high by 27 inches wide. These media stations will be displaying sponsored content on them, which will be rotating static images, non-dynamic images, every eight seconds. So these charging stations have dual capabilities of charging your car at a Level 2 capacity as well as providing a sponsored content message that's directed towards pedestrians and customers entering and exiting the Stop &amp; Shop Grocery Store. Along with the charging stations, they're placed in landscape islands that are adjacent to existing parking stalls. We're not doing any sort of net change in parking at all. It's a one-for-one change. Included in that parking stall will be striping denoting EV charging station parking capability as well as a small standard parking sign that will also denote EV charging capability for that parking stall. Power will be drawn from the existing Stop &amp; Shop panels. There is no new electrical utility service being created here. We're taking power directly from the Stop &amp; Shop, and we actually do a unique technology where we bore underneath the parking lot, so there's no open trenching, there's no disruption to customers, there's no disruption to traffic during the construction process with trenching. The construction area is specifically limited to the installation of the footings for the two charging stations as well as the parking stall for the striping and the installation of the signage. So just to recap slightly, the last time we were here before the planning board, we had done sort of the same presentation describing the scope of the improvements. We had been told that we needed to go ahead for a couple of more variances, so we have since been to the ZBA, and we have been granted those variances, and now we're here before you today to discuss these improvements since then. So with that, I'll open it up for questions or comments from the board here. Thank you.
So the location, if you could specifically explain the location?
Would you love to be closer?
You know, I think so. Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Yep.
For us...
I don't have telesc... I have the transitions, but I don't have telescopic yet. I'm sure I'll be heading that way.
Oh, towards P.
Yeah.
That's right, towards...
Okay, so here we have the front of the shopping.
Right.
Yes.
Front drive aisle.
Yep.
And along this front drive aisle, we have our landscape islands, separate parking. And so our locations are here and over here. So we're far away from the road. If you're familiar with the site, it's a very large parking lot or a small wooded sort of upper area in between. You also have a Shell gas station towards plant northwest there, and then across the street, you also have a Cumberland Farms gas station. So if you're orienting yourself a little bit, front street lies up here, plant north, and this is shopping center. So these are the two locations there, just two parking stalls, two EV charging stations. Like I said, they have Level 2 capabilities for charging stations.
Two each?
No, no, no. Level 2 is a...
No, I know the Level 2, but I mean, how many cars can charge at one time?
Just one.
So one for each one?
Yeah, only one charging capable for each station.
Now, is there going to be the possibility of being able to expand as needed?
Expand in terms of installing multiple charging stations in addition to what's shown here as part of this application?
Yeah.
There would be at this time. We're really only looking at exploring installing two right now, but, you know, there could be an opportunity to expand. It depends on how the success of how these go and future plan.
Do you put an extra conduit in the conduit run, just for the chance in the future to...
In some instances, we do. In this instance, the only way we do is two conduits. Actually, we do. We are proposing a spare con conduit. That's right.
That's right.
Indeed, entirely.
So you'd be able to expand it to four in total?
It's possible, yes.
Two per each?
So we install just an additional con, spare conduit.
So at this point, you're interested in us reviewing your sign presentation?
That's right.
Right? Yeah.
Have we had a public hearing? A question to Dan, do you know if we had a public hearing?
So this isn't...
It's not a site on the lot. It's just a sign approval, so we don't need a public hearing. We've had public hearings in the ZBA, we've had public hearings.
Right.
I don't know if we needed to have one here.
It's not a site on the presentation.
This is more for the architectural review board?
Correct.
Yeah, so at this point, it's, we don't have a resolution prepared yet. There's one of two options here. You can prove it when it's certain good resolution after, or prove or deny it, and we can certainly give it a resolution after, or we can adjourn it for more months and circulate a resolution there. I do think it's probably ready to move on now, but that's completely within your expression.
So if you'll take a moment, Pete, to look at the, here.
Right.
This is the...
Right, I saw it.
You did? Oh, okay.
Yep.
So are there any questions from...
So I'm assuming you're showing the wood underneath in response to Adam's comments, or was it kind of his own board?
No, we're not showing. The wood will not be installed. That was...
So what are we looking at here?
That was discussed at the May meeting.
Yeah. I thought that you're showing me a resin wood base, and you indicated at that last meeting that you had a wooden resin version of wood at your bottom panel.
And that you would bring samples.
Right.
We are not actually doing that product. With Volt, this would be our standard product. That was just an option that we had. Those are samples of ones that we have done elsewhere, but the product that we are proposing today to install here is our standard product. This is what we are proposing.
What's the height between the base and the screen?
It's about three.
You know, if you want, what they can do is with graphic paper, whatever you call it, they can put anything on it. If you want to do away with the, or if you want, you know, change the effect of the base.
I'm confused because this is an about turn from when we spoke last at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think what we were talking about was trying to make it compatible with the aesthetic of the building.
Not only that, but our code wants a country preferably wooden look to the sign, and...
We have a representative standing here.
Good evening.
So this wooden finish that we spoke about last time, it is technically discontinued. It's not a company that we have relationships with the manufacturers and team them. The reason that we discontinued it was because we found that these standard bases just hold up better over time. So that's less maintenance, less sort of saying the clients have here, and, you know, people parking, going shopping in those areas, they don't have to look at the depot station. So that's kind of the reason why if a town insists that we do use the wooden panels, you know, we can't find a way to source them, it's just the wooden...
Personally, I think the wooden panel would be out of line.
Okay.
You know, either stick with, I take it that that's probably an anodized base or something?
Stay with steel base for a second.
The base is actually copper.
Is what?
It's all plated in case.
Copper?
Concrete?
Concrete.
So underneath the monitor is concrete?
So this is all, it would be a metal finish, but then around the enclosure would be like concrete.
Am I looking at concrete there?
Yes.
I see, okay.
But then this on the side right here, that would be just a metal.
Metal.
So the front of that and the back of that would be concrete?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have an image? One time you had a drawing showing the building in the background. Do you have that?
It's not maybe part of the...
Submission?
The submission there.
It's actually in front of Macy's.
It was definitely part of the... It's possibly on this.
Right.
Well, I mean, the building face, I think, has a metal roof painted red or something, and then a concrete, it's concrete on the face of it.
It does have block concrete, I believe, you know, tan or some time.
So is there a way you could match the concrete on here with the face of the building?
To match that.
No. There's really this. There's nothing for us to review. There's no discretion here. We're attempting to try to match this with the building, and what you're saying is, this is our product irregardless of the site, and this is where we put everywhere.
Right, and we deploy them nationwide, so we match it to, so I just missed the location.
It's a bit misleading that the wooden one was given in this August submittal.
Yeah, that's what's...
I'm a little confused by that.
That is the, you know, same...
That was my request.
That you have stove, yeah, at the top, it looks like stove.
Yeah, it was discussed at the January and the May meeting, the wood base, so it sounded like it wasn't a problem, and I thought that the, you know, I thought the board wanted it at the time. I know Pete has, you know, said he doesn't necessarily, but...
You know, what your concern is, is you want to break up the look of the concrete, is that right?
Wanted to pick off of the...
I think it's going to be, I've had people in town tell me, this is going to be an ice wall in front of the building. It's going to be a flashy graphic, I'm just telling what people are saying from what they see. And so our goal, I think, is an architectural review board, you know, is to try to have this blend into its surrounding as best as it can and not clash with, you know, have a big, bright clash.
All right, so there's building products out there that make a facade on a building. You can probably buy anything today that is going to be, have a granite, you know, it's sheet material, granite face or brick or whatever, so why not just have something that is similar to what is the front of the building?
And that's kind of what I was suggesting.
Okay, but it is something, it is something that would be added to or on the face of the concrete.
But I think that they want you and I to do it. They don't want to do it.
No, well, fine, no, yeah, right.
I was trying to be funny.
You know, Rob, you mentioned, you mentioned about the screen...
You're supposed to say, no, we'll do it. That's what he's looking for. That would have been the next one.
You mentioned about the screen, and you said that the message is going to change every eight seconds? Can it be, can it be, can the change be slower than that?
So we actually follow the National Highway Administration. That's kind of their recommendation for, you know, safe at a thousand flips. So we are following that, you know, we are in a part of life opposed to highway where cars are traveling faster. Another reason why it's difficult for us to change that is because we sell the advertising in eight-second clips.
Sure.
And so nationwide, we have campaigns where our partners are trying to roll out their ads, and, you know, in the town, even only it's seven, eight seconds, a fifteen-second clip. It's very complicated and messy for our media team.
So it's, now, is it great con... So it's, if, now, is it gray concrete, or it's, yeah, like cement board?
And, you know, it is meant to be very muted, obviously, we want people walking by to see our screens. You know, the screens, I know people said that it's flashy, but it's, it's really not meant to be, there's static images, there's no sound, there's no video playing. At night, it goes auto dim, so we are gonna keep it as, as possible in terms of, you know, potential.
So there is auto dim, okay, and, so they're, they're not actually movies, they're static images that, that change every eight seconds.
Right, so our station screens have, do have the ability to play video because it is, you know, like a TV screen, basically. But we can just push out static ads, and that's actually what we do throughout our piece.
Is there any texture to the cement board at all, or is it, is it trilled smooth? Or is it cement board that is porous, what does it look like?
You're missing my point.
Concrete.
Oh, what, yeah, concrete, poured, it's poured concrete.
It would not be like a prime finish or anything like that, it would be, it would be sort of a brush, sort of a look like you're seeing here.
Okay.
You know, like a form of concrete.
Sure, I got your point, they're just not offering it.
Well, you haven't told them to, that, that... Is that something that's of concern? Because if you feel that it is, and everything, then what you do is you tell them that's what, that's what we want.
So I think, I think we did that at the January and May meetings.
Well, you said wood.
What they're telling us now is there's no option.
Yeah, they said...
There's no option with the manufacturer of the wood.
Well, they, yeah, they're just saying that it's not an option that's available, period, they...
No, yeah, I, I disagree, because...
Well, let them clarify.
You can, you can buy...
I don't want to speak for them, let them tell us.
You can buy, you can buy, commercially, you can buy board, or whatever it is, to put a facade on a structure. Like on a chimney or something, a concrete chimney, you look at them, I don't think that the, they, they have these boards that will make it look as though it's built with stone, or brick, or whatever, whatever the case may be. So if it is something that is important to us, then we tell them, fine, you put your station in, but you've got to add the board to it.
So...
Who's in charge? We're in charge.
The point that I want to clarify is Volt had discontinued the use of the wooden panel boards, simply because they just didn't hold up as well as the concrete.
Right.
We certainly still have a relationship with our manufacturers, and they can make it for us, and if that's what we're asking them, they'd be happy for that. It was just our recommendation and our kind of experience based on station capacity of using wooden panels, that these are just a better option. But if the concern is, you know, you want it to be set facing and match the facade building, you know, that's certain, certain.
No, it was resin, right?
This was a picture from May, you don't happen to have this with you, do you? This was a picture you gave us in May. Which had the building behind it, it was kind of superimposed, you don't happen to have any with you, do you?
I don't have any of those.
So...
Yes, you can kind of see a little bit of the stop and shop behind, they superimposed it on there to give you a concept of what it looked like. And this is actually the model that we're showing right here. So you can, you could take a look at this.
See our, our comprehensive plan, in our code, it's pretty specific about the, the look and feel of signs, and stone, wood.
There's, there's a block in the columns there, it looks like you got a red, what is it, standing some metal roof from the front of the stop and shop?
Right, 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 I, I understand what you're saying, but this is different than like a chimney or a fire, this is...
Why is it different?
Because it's an electrical product.
Yeah, the base is not an electrical...
Let me, let me, let me, it's an, it's an electrical product, and you know that if you place something on here, there are other considerations like water. Does water collect up against this thing? I, I don't know that you could just manipulate a sophisticated electrical product like you would do like the front of a house, you know?
I, Rob, that's, to me, okay.
I'm, I'm just responding to you, but my, my...
I understand it.
This is my concern, I, I've been struggling with this from the beginning, and, and I'm trying to be open to, to this, and, and in a way that it'll, it'll work, like, to at least downgrade its appearance, or try to make it blend in with its background, and that would make it more compatible, palatable for me. And so that's why we made those comments back in Jay, January and May, and, and seemingly, you've come back to us and said, well, we heard your comments, but we haven't made any change whatsoever.
Well, they did, they actually changed it away from what they had agreed to because of a discontinuation of this resin.
Am I getting that wrong?
So, so we would order the wooden finish, like, they, they would be shown on the drawings, we would show it on our drawings. When we go to order, our, our managers are ordering that from supply chain, so there really isn't any change to the drawings in terms of the comments for the wooden finish.
Right.
We would just do that when we have a really much of a permit for it.
So if you could just expand on, so, so I think where we've, we've arrived at now is that you can order, right? If we push a resin wooden faci- flat, or something like that.
It's not certain that it's for...
It's actual wood, wood, all right. Okay.
So I'm just, I'm trying to work with, I think, my, one suggestion I would make is, what if we do more landscaping around that?
Is shrubs?
In the faces of them?
More wood, Rob?
Landscaping, landscaping around, shrubs at the face of it, small shrubs that don't grow above it.
We've done it in the past, we can certainly do that here. I do have a question for the board, and so, as a pedestrian or driver or passenger by these stations, you're looking at the screen, you're looking at the base, and you're not facing the store, it's some kind of that picture that you pulled up earlier, you kind of see the station, but I feel like that blends in with the concrete curtains that is right around, right?
It does.
So by putting a wooden panel, it's actually creating more of a clash between what's on the island, as opposed to matching it to the sun, so... So I, I think this is more consistent when you're looking at the screen, when you're looking at the station, a more consistent look, but if you guys disagree, we can...
I don't necessarily disagree.
I don't disagree with him either, I, I think he's right about that.
Looks like there's block columns, you know, I don't see any wood on the stop and shop from here.
Yeah.
No, I don't either.
No, it's all, it's all block.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point, he is trying to match the color or something, but I, I think, at this point, I'd rather just see softened it up with plantings.
Some additional...
Think that matches a roof?
We can propose some native plantings in there, too, you know?
It looks like there are some there already, though.
There are some there, we can match, we can match that if you'd like to see others.
Well, I'd like you to suggest Alex Glabra, I don't really think about that, I think that's a nice small shrub.
Alex Glabra?
Pink parrot?
You also have...
It's a broadleaf evergreen. That's a dis-such shrub.
The town, the town, the town that's giving, but we just also want to make sure that...
I mean, it's, other than saying I don't want to, I want to try to work with that, so if we can do some plantings on the island, and then to try to soften that up, I think it would look nice sticking out of the planting then.
Yeah, they've, they've got to be able to grab the handle, presumably, so...
This is what we're gonna have on through one every fifty miles?
Not gonna be completely surrounded by man, so they gotta be able to grab the handle, a lot of people stepping in there, so...
I really had my eye on Ford Lightning, space leader, not pickup truck, Ford's making one.
Yeah.
Is the Lightning one a hybrid?
Back there?
Yeah, I can't remember, the Ford Lightning, is that a hybrid?
I don't think so.
I can't recall, yeah, I, I was looking at it, you can actually charge your house with the pickup truck in the event of a power outage, instead of a generator, it's interesting. But look, I, so where we could go with this now, Rob and Pete, is basically, if you're kind of agreeing, I'm, I'm agreeing with where we're at, I think you two may be, I'm not sure, I'm not gonna speak for you, but if, if we did, and we vote, we could approve a resolution.
Well, how did they show planting plan and come back to the next one?
Could do that too, sure, we could do that also, yeah.
We have the opportunity to vote on and have a resolution, you know, conditional upon providing native plantings, and have, that would, is, we do need to get, you know, approval from the client for plantings as well. I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we can select a specific planting, like that would be...
No, and I'm only suggesting, I'm not, I'm not the designer.
You know, it's have an opportunity for us to, since you guys are here today, vote conditional on including plantings.
Well, no, because then we have no discretion over, you might just put one flower in there and say, I've met my condition of plantings, and you're done.
Cut plant.
I like to, I'm, I know you won't do that, but I'm, I'm just saying that limits our ability to make sure that you've softened the, the sign, that's my opinion. I think I'm compromising that, because I'm at the edge of saying, I, I don't think you've met any of our conditions, and I'm, and I'm, I'm ready to vote no against this, but I think if we, if you can come back with a planting plan that shows that you've softened, even show like how you've superimposed the image, show the plantings in front of it, and show us how we've, then, we've done our job as an architectural review board to say, all right, that looks like it's going to blend into the background better, and fit in the space that you're providing, you know?
And this same point was important to another board member that's not present today as well.
Okay.
My neighbor as well, has some concerns.
Okay.
You know, so i- if there's one or two or three, right, there's more, and the better job we do of mitigating whatever is from now concrete, I think that will, that will bode well for all of us.
But, but can I say, I mean, we can be prepared to approve it the next meeting, right? There's nothing else that would...
Yeah, we can have a resolution there.
Yeah, so why don't we, you, if, if you meet our condition now, and you come back, I'll meet your condition and vote to approve it next meeting.
Sure.
Where in the local area do you have stations installed?
Did you do La Grange?
Docksberry.
You didn't, you guys didn't do La Grange, I thought there was something in La Grange, did anyone hear about that?
Nah, it's not us. Docksberry, I think you're closest to here. We got, we have Ridgefield, too, and that's maybe, maybe distant.
In Ridgefield?
Yep.
They're coming, they're gonna be all over.
No, that's not the, okay, so in Ridgefield you have, and what is it, on Route Six?
I was at a stop and shop.
In your garage, there you go. We good? Or you have more?
Well, no, I'm just, I'm thinking that, all this discussion, the one, the units that you've put in at Ridgefield, this is what the unit is?
I believe, we have a little model, but I think we have the four stations installed.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of the base.
I, I believe it's the same as this.
Yeah, it's probably hard, because of supply chain issues and improvements.
It's been installed, I think, operating for at least a year.
Okay.
All right, I'll tell you what.
Seems very dynamic, the, the process of supplying and designing, isn't it?
What I'd like you to do...
The equipment itself.
What I'd like you to do, please, is contact the planning board department in the ne- in the next, within the next week, and give, give them the address of, and location of your units in Ridgefield, please.
I could pull it up on my phone and give you to you right now, if that's okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
I want it, because I want to go look at it, I mean...
I just want to make sure we don't forget to call, or someone doesn't pass it along to you or something, we can give it to you right now.
And that, the other thing I was gonna mention is, from the May minutes, we talked about public service announce, we also talked about the January one. And you were gonna reach out to the fire department, I think, to see if there was any way to collaborate public service announcements for emergencies?
So the, the kind of sponsored content that we have for communities is more community messaging, I'm not sure how exactly that works. For example, if there's an emergency and you develop social messaging, how would that be communicated instantly, as opposed to like, messaging it as being prepared, sent to us in advance? And we have good times dedicated to the town, I think that's something that we could already list this board right now.
Could put their, their hand on.
They have prepared slides or content that they could use.
Yeah, I think Fay was talking about that a lot. It was definitely Fay that was talking about it, I had, see, my notes right here. And you guys said that you could do something with that. So, we just want to make sure that we keep our eye on that ball as well.
I do have the answer, if you'd like to write it down.
Yeah, do me a favor, write it down, would you please? Thank you. You and I can take a ride.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah.
What about your lunch?
I'll drive.
There you go.
Might answer a lot of questions, Rob, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you, man, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you next month.
Danbury Road, I think it's Route Six.
Where is it, Lieutenant?
I think Danbury Road is Route Six.
Yeah.
Yep.
Casey subdivision, yes, hi.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good, yourself?
We're doing great.
My, my name is Stephen Burns, I'm, I'm with Burns Engineering Services, representing the applicant, Peter Casey. The, Mr. Casey would like to subdivide his five point seventy acre parcel in the R forty-five zoning district into three parcels, the parcel, the, the parcel is located on, it's Seven Valley View Road, which is on the east side of, the northeast side of Baker Road, and Valley View Road is on the towns list of, of private roads. The, the existing lot has a house, septic and well, the well will be reused, and the, a new septic, or tile fill will be designed for the existing house, and the proposed two other lots will be supported by individual wells and tile fills. The, the two new lots will be about one point seven acres in size, just over, just a little bit larger than that, and the existing lot will be about two point three six acres if we're part of it. Is mainly, mainly is slopes to the south, and it is, for the most part, clear metal and lawn. There's not, there's not much for standing trees or anything.
Okay.
And if you guys have any questions, or...
Is this behind Fay's place?
Huh?
This is behind Fay, Fay's place?
It's near Fay's.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think where... Is Valley View one of the dead end roads?
Yes, yeah.
As you're going up Baker? Oh shit, Casey, that's the first one on the right-hand side, when... Oh shit, Casey, that's the first one on the right-hand side when you headed up the hill from...
Just past Ferris's old house.
Excuse me?
Past Ferris's old house.
First day of the day.
Yes, yes. Okay.
So I think, Dan, did you want to discuss the issue regarding frontage?
Yeah, so basically comments number six and seven were the big ones that I saw. I mean, the other stuff is housekeeping related to pre-application and sketch plan. That's just straight-up code stuff. But as you mentioned, Valley View Road is listed as a private road. Our code defines road frontage as the linear distance of a lot along a public street, road or right-of-way. And in the R-45 district is 100 foot of road frontage required for each lot. So the question became, is that, does this meet the requirements of that 100 foot road frontage? Because it's a private road, actually. So they've got, I'm just gonna point over here, but there's 51.3 feet of frontage along Baker Road. Baker Road is a public road. And what they're doing is they're basically splitting that with a flag lot, if you will. So there's two lots that have maybe 25 foot of frontage. And then the third one has none on a public road. So, and we don't define them as flag lots in the Town of Beetham. We basically define those as rear lots. So there's a provision in the code that specifically talks about rear lots. I think it's 155-41. And in that section, it says that you can't do rear lots in the R-45 district. So there's a couple of things that are just concerning that I don't want to go too, too far into the, to find out that we have issues. And whether or not that's a variance thing or not, then that may be the case. But we need to identify that so that if we're gonna do this eventual seeker, we need to do a coordinated review. That's the way the Town of Beetham normally does it. It's coordinated review even for unlisted actions, so.
There is a new construction home on, it faces Dill Hill Road, which is the next one to the north. But the back of the lot touches, touches Valley View Road. And both of those roads, I believe, are both private.
Right. Right, those are the, those are the lots that Strack, right?
Wayne?
Wayne?
I don't, I don't know. I just know that there's a house under construction there.
Huh?
Cottage.
So Dan...
There's a, there's a house that just got, probably doesn't have a seal, like right here.
Excuse me?
There's a, there's a lot right here that's currently under construction. It's in between Dill Hill, which is...
Okay, all right.
Dill Hill Road is right here. This is Valley View. And I think Cottage is actually down there, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that, presumably that was a lot that was created some time ago.
Also, Dill, Cottage, I think, up here is another lot.
Now, there's another, there's another lot beyond...
Sites.
At the, at the end of Valley View, right?
There's at the end of...
Existing, yeah, there's a lot.
Right.
But it is a lot existing, right?
District is right down there.
But what's, Dan, what's the point of the 50-foot strip?
What's the, what's the point of what?
Of this 50-foot strip at the bottom?
Well, the 50-foot strip that is part of this subject parcel was part of filed map 7215. So the Casey subdivision from 1985 provided three lots. And in that process, they took 50 feet, for some reason, don't, I don't know why at this point, and added it to this parcel. You know, presumably, we always did 50 feet as a minimum width because then you can put a town road through it, but...
Okay, so it's there just because it was on a previous approved plat?
Because it's part of the, because it's part of the law.
Huh?
Because it's part of the existing law, that's why it's...
It became part of the existing lot as part of that filed map?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, to pitch.
I have some questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I gotta ask, up there.
I can come over to you if you want.
Oh, that's all right.
I have the total page too, if that helps.
All right, so these three lots here have houses, and they're not parts of it.
Not part of the subdivision, I believe, and this one might be vacant though.
There is a vacant one in between. It was, the whole property was my mother-in-law's. And she subdivided it to two acres, three acres, two acres for the daughters. And then my son, my husband got this lot, and we're subdividing it for it.
Yeah, and the intent is to subdivide for that.
And so, with this lot, and there's one house here and there, and some of that, some of that...
Yes.
So now, the next question I have is, how is the road, the private road, is there an agreement for that? How are, how are we operating on their private road?
There's no current agreement for the private road.
All right, so who's using it now?
Um, there are, there's one house that's passive.
That's Carlson.
Uh, there's one, two, three, four, does the front of that lot, uh...
Because that's a vacant.
Okay, so it's this house, this house, and this house.
Okay, so there's three currently using it?
Yes.
And then there's two in the subdivision that you're gonna add to that, and then there's a vacant one that has...
But this vacant one also has access to Baker.
So, all right, I just, they're, they're operating under a private road. Is it gravel or paved?
Gravel.
Gravel.
Is gravel?
Is gravel, just like...
Valley, okay, all right.
One of the things I would like to see, just looking at, you know, where there could be potential roadways, that sort of thing, is title abstract going back to common ownership. Just so we kind of trace all of this.
Okay.
I don't know how far that goes back, but that would certainly be helpful.
Who owns the road?
Who's the title abstract for the entire, all of this? The, you know, that predates the subdivision, if I went back to when there was one lot.
Hopefully that would shed light on the road as well.
What it is, who, basically bring it back to the one main...
So why is it my mother-in-law?
When, before your mother-in-law subdivided it?
It was my mother-in-law's.
And they created...
So they have 12 acres going from, except for the one house that's at the end. They have 12 acres all the way up to Baker. They subdivided it for four children.
But who owned the road parcel, the Valley View Road parcel?
Not the big road, I believe, or it's, it's on Dill, on, maybe it was still, I believe it's coordinated. But I think our, because our road frontage only goes to our house, it's not to the road.
It only goes to Dill Hill, yes. Or it only goes up to...
I mean, we've got, we've got, if I could hit the discussion, I want to see the title abstract, just so I can go through it on my own.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, it was probably back 1950.
Yeah, probably. The 1955 aerial still had this all farm fields. And I think the Carlson house might have been built in 56. And then the Casey home that's existing on this parcel was there by the 1970 aerial. So somewhere in between 55 and 70, something came up with that private road and then, you know, construction of two different houses at that time.
So here's my comments, Chairman. If, the first thing I would think is, if you can determine the ownership of that road and somehow, I think the ideal situation would be to try to get that to be a public road and dedicate it to the town. Now, to do that, the town would insist, and we would insist, that it be brought up to Town standards. So alternatively, if, we need to formalize the agreement on that road. If it needs, I'm not necessarily against a private road. That, that's, you know, a suitable way of accessing lots, as long as there's enough room there and there's not too many lots on the private road. But still, we would need to formalize an agreement on that, on everyone who's using that, every lot that has potential use of that road. So it's important that we iron out the access to those lots and have some form of an agreement for that private road. And it just may be like a maintenance agreement and an easement. So that's just, my comment is mainly, generally, is that we need to figure, work out that access issue. And then as far as being able to have frontage, you know, you may need a variance from the zoning board to have the ability to have frontage on a private road. So, and then the final thing is, if it is going to be a private road, if you choose that option, as far as I see the options, I think we would want to, you know, make sure that the fire department has a look at this. It's a private road, they need to be able to provide access, fire access to these houses. So there's certain minimum standard...
You can it already.
I was gonna say, they burned it in my house, so, cheer me tiger.
They have, yeah? Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, sorry.
The road is pretty straight and flat. It's, it's, the only, the only thing that I can see that the fire department would have issue with would possibly be turning around.
Yeah, things like that, I, I, listen, I've gone through this on my own property. We have a private road on our property. We did the same exact thing. We subdivided parcels for the kids. And so the thing that the fire department was very, you know, concerned about is having room to get by. So, you know, to have space along the side of the road where someone can pull over and they can get by. And they just need to know that they can get down there. It wasn't necessarily needed to have paving. But I just think it's important for the fire department to be comfortable with their ability to provide fire emergency services there.
What you could do, Rob, is say that it should be an all-weather road. And also you could use the, some of the criteria for driveways as far as turnouts and that sort of thing go.
Yeah, typically every 500 feet you have a turnout. You got, if it's X amount of feet, you normally have to wait, have the way for it to turn around the vehicle instead of having it back all the way out, so. There's things that could be done.
Yeah, that's not insurmountable.
I have nothing more to add myself unless...
So we'll work on getting a title report for the road to try to sort out what the ownership is and everything of that land. And, you know, once we, once we have that sorted out, we can proceed from there, I think.
Well, I think, Rob, I think your concern is, is that, so that on any of the existing lots, that basically is an agreement that the road can be maintained so that it doesn't become a disagreeable...
It could be a safety issue.
Well, it's more than that. It's, I, it's important that there's an agreement that everyone's helping to maintain that road who's using it. But also that someone just doesn't block the road in the future. And say, "I'm gonna put a fence right across it. I have rights to do that." And then the guys in the back literally have no say over the situation. So you want to have everyone to have an equal stake in that road. That's what the easement does. It'll give you, it gives each and every one of those parcels right to ingress and egress on that road. And no one will have the ability to obstruct that road. And that's gonna be very, right now, you're, you're sort of in danger of that. Now everyone's friendly and you're good friends with your neighbors and it's probably not gonna happen. But then the nightmare neighbor moves, you know, someone sells their house and the nightmare guy moves in and says, "I'm gonna just park my trucks there." You know, and what do you have to protect those lots in the back? And I think now's a good time to work that out while you're so good at it.
That would make it easier for you.
That makes it easier.
You would think, presumably. Presumably. Yeah, Carlson, yeah.
So again, again, the ideal solution would be to really formalize it and to, to build an actual road and dedicate it to the town. Then they would be maintaining the road.
So whose responsibility would it be to go?
It would be your responsibility.
That's, I don't think that that's financially feasible.
Yeah, and I...
And that's why, that's why I'm saying...
I think the geometry is a little tough on it too, at the beginning and...
You're right. It is a little bit, it would take a little bit to get the vertical curves in the beginning.
Yeah. But yeah, so I appreciate that, Rob. That's all good suggestions.
Very good.
I think the only other suggestion you could have made would be that they could, of course, do a new road on the 50-foot strip. But that's also cost prohibitive, more than likely, for servicing three lots, so.
The, the house at the end used to be owned by Kirsch, right?
My, yes.
Familiar with it.
You good?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you as well. We can talk more outside.
I just, my husband knows who owns that, that's your responsibility.
That's fine. I like to watch.
So we don't do that?
No, no, you guys will do that.
We have to do that?
I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks. Daniel, I'm just gonna, you know, you...
Does the town want to make a new road? Like, I'm doing the town.
Take it.
But hey, we're gonna have to do a couple of improvements. We're gonna make a nice new town. We're gonna invest in up to Snuff where right now it's pretty tall. So there's a benefit to the town by doing that. Maybe with zoning board, you look at that as part of the reasons to grant the areas. You know, that's how it works, at least. But that's, look at this, I mean, how many of these, we have no control of what's going on there. And like you said, I've seen a lot of situations where the people monitor each other. They're putting, you know, blocks across the way, falling trees on purpose on it, you know what I mean? Parking cars so you can't get by.
Hey, hey, Dan, this Gray Hollow. Why do I think it's on the opposite side of the road of the Girl Scout camp?
It is.
Does it touch the Girl Scout camp?
No.
Huh?
No, the road, the road separates them.
Right, so the subdivision is on the left side of Gardner Hollow. Or, excuse me, Gray...
Gray Hollow.
Is on the left side of Gray Hollow. And the Girl Scouts...
Or Depot Hill, I suppose. The Girl Scouts would be left on, left side of Depot Hill.
All right, so this trust is not a, what's the word, a continuous parcel?
They might do with land hooks across the road, but we'll let them...
to be able to adapt the fee schedule, to allow the highway superintendent to set the deposit for, you know, any set of improvements, like that 75, get cash deposit, they're all related to fees and the fee schedule to the town, make it easier to set some fees.
Yeah, building permit fees, planning fees, rec fees, also, yeah, the highway, I think everything, there's...
But it'd be set by the Towne Board, right?
So, yeah, right. So any, any comments you guys have will just be passed on to them.
Right.
But if it's a non, anybody wants to offer an opinion, so if it's a non, I can advise it.
So they're just setting fees?
Yeah. What this does is it makes it so that, right now, every time they try to change a fee, they have to pass a local law to do it.
Yeah.
Which is a whole big rigmarole process.
It's expensive.
It costs legal fees and professional fees and all these things. So what they wanna do is make it so that every year, if they choose to do so in the beginning of the year, whatever, they can say, "This is our fees for this year by Towne Board resolution," and they can just do it and then it's done. So it's memorialized and set that way, as opposed to going through a three-month process of, you know, notifying Dutchess County Department of Planning, all of our neighboring municipalities, you guys, dealing with our attorneys who we love to pay, our engineers who they love to pay. So it just, it's just to, to ease the process, if you will.
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Easy enough.
Yep.
The second local law is, the Towne Board's considering a short-term, like, closing of Towne Beakman.
Wouldn't say preventing.
Prevent, not...
Just, okay.
Through anything less than 30 days would be the standard.
Well, no, yeah, but they're not preventing that?
Not preventing.
Okay, I just wanna make that very clear.
Just putting restrictions.
It's not preventing, it's, it's just putting restrictions and permitting on those folks.
Under 30. And primarily, the reason for that is because of some issues that have cropped up.
What are the issues?
Well, one, one very interesting case where owner of a property had a, an individual who was, who had become a tenant, a short-term tenant, and the definition of short-term tenant would be under 30 days and advertised, and/or advertised on Airbnb or a website of that nature.
Okay.
And as the story goes, allegedly, this individual wanted to walk around without clothes on, in the woods. So these types of things and stories that are coming up as a result of these, these new hospitality suites, or whatever you wanna call them, create these kind of issues. So he didn't want to be filmed, okay, while he was doing his thing. Plus, there have also been some other abuses where parties are taking place, I'm sure you heard of the death that took place.
No.
No. All right. That's, that's another issue, yeah. And I believe if I'm right, our law only allows for accessory apartments, right?
Yeah, currently, there's an accessory apartment law, legislation, yeah, but that's, that's really intended for longer-term leases.
Mm-hmm. Do we have any provisions for border, border housing, border...
I think this partially amends section 155 as well. So what this would do is, this would add a new chapter to the town code 126.1, but it would also amend section 155. Let's see, it's actually, what it does to 155 is it adds 155-39.1, which is a section on short-term rentals, and then it adds a definition for short-term rentals.
Also requires owner occupation, so the owner has to be on-site and rent the basement or the accessory apartment, or whatever the case may be.
So this applies to accessory apartments?
Not directly.
Right, the house, any sort of living or dwelling. A, a big part of this, or the idea of this is that you don't necessarily want to change the character of some of these neighborhoods in Towne Beakman with housing that becomes transient. You know, if the Towne Beakman is going to be full of popels, it's going, should still be full of housing, but we are going, you know, there's, there's gonna be a permit process for some of these short-term rentals, so Towne Board can rent it, just like with that.
These things, from my experience, you know, where you have a piece of property, now a lot of hedge fund managers are buying up homes, and other companies, they are not residents of our town, they don't even have a person living full-time in these homes, and it's a revolving door. With that, you don't get the scrutiny that you do with long-term leases and background checks.
Well, what's, what's...
It's more like a hotel.
What's the, so you're telling me that if I wanna buy a parcel or buy a house in, in the Towne of Beakman, that I'm gonna have to go through a background check?
All right, no, not at all. I have a building in Wapinners Falls, right? I don't, I don't allow for short-term rentals, weekend, week, or monthly rentals. I'm looking for a long-term care resident, a long-term resident, tenant. Why? Because I want them to respect the property. I want to count on, so I do a background check to make sure I'm putting the right person in my property. And, and there's a lease involved.
So where does the tan, where does the tan...
And do you know what an Airbnb is?
No.
Okay, so let's start with that. So an Airbnb is, you have two houses, and one house you live in, the other one is on Baker Road, and you advertise it on a website, and it is basically like a hotel, room, and anybody that wants to rent it for the weekend can come and rent it. And then you're not, you're not writing a lease, you're not having them fill out an applicant, you might, you might, but you're not gonna go to the degree, checking references, getting paycheck stuffs.
Right, it's a, it's a, it's a weekend rental.
It's a weekend rental.
So what's the purpose of the law on the weekend rental?
To prevent, to prevent...
Who's, who's gonna...
To prevent people moving, using the house next door to your house for the weekend, having a party, and disturbing the peace.
Who's gonna oversee this?
There's a group.
I'm against it.
What's that?
Against, against what?
I'm, I'm, I'm against government overseeing something such as this.
Okay. Let me just ask some questions, if you don't mind.
No.
All right. First of all, is the law prohibiting it in any...
No, I, I misspoke at that part, I'm gonna clarify. It's not prohibiting it, it creates a permitting process.
It's creating a permitting process.
Permitting process.
So now, people who would do this, and let's be fair, you know, there are some people who are diligent about their Airbnbs and they're, they're doing all the right things, but now, beforehand, they, they would just do it, now they're gonna need to apply for a permit, and then the town is gonna oversee the permit process. So who, who exactly is overseeing, is this gonna be our code enforcement?
It's Building Department.
Our Building Department.
Building Department permit, does not involve Planning Board.
Okay, so can we just go through just some of the big requirements of the permit? Is there any way you could summarize that for us, or...
So, as far as the, the permit itself goes, they are gonna make it unlawful to use, establish, maintain, operate, rent, or lease, advertise for a weekend rental without having obtained the permit. Just have to be, some zoning, there's gonna be zones where it's gonna be authorized. So, permitted by Towne Board, apply the zoning, which is properly located.
So there's gonna be some zones where it's gonna be permitted by right?
I don't know if I put that in here. It's not in the actual bill. All right, so I, I read that, I didn't see any.
All right, so one of the big ones is the pri, the, the owner has to live in the residence. You can't just have a house that's, it's not your primary residence and make it an Airbnb.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a big one. Proof of insurance, we're gonna give them, a sketch map, so we're gonna require them to give us a sketch map. Is that sketch map gonna be, it needs to be prepared by a licensed professional? That's a big one.
I don't think so, because I think they said you could use pictures and other things, and it's really a Building Department review, so it's not...
I'm sorry.
Maybe as stringent as...
It's not necessary for it to be prepared by a licensed professional.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry about that, my correction, that's good. They can hand do the sketch map. Assigned certification form to the town attorney that they're attesting to, all right, so they're gonna do some attestations where it's my primary, so they have to fill out a form, that's not that big of a deal. A non-refundable fee, so there's gonna be a fee. The owner intends to, if the, all right, so they have to certify if they're preparing food.
Essentially, if they, if they are making their house to a bed and breakfast on the weekend, they're gonna have to...
Say that again, please?
If they're, if they're planning on serving food at their, at these places, they're gonna have to go through the Department of Health compliance.
So that's just basically, if you're doing food service at there, you have to get your Department of Health as well.
But when I have guests for, when I have guests at my house for the weekend, I don't have to, uh...
I guess, are you charging your guests for the weekend?
No.
It wouldn't apply to you because you're, you're there, but you're there and you're in your house. That's an important distinction, because there is a restriction in the permit that says no restaurant may be operated, no meals may be prepared. So they're, they're trying to distinguish this from, from a bed and breakfast. If you want me a bed and breakfast, then you go to the bed and breakfast section.
Which we have a code for that, that's correct.
This is in a residential neighborhood permitting fewer than 30-day rental stays at your home when you're not there.
Well, what, your home or a house that you own?
Yeah, home or a house that you own. So then there's gonna be an inspection, and we need to check, the inspection's gonna look at the Uniform Building Code, we're gonna, this is something they wouldn't normally do now, but now they're gonna be subject to an inspection. Did I say that correctly, though? In a residential neighborhood, what zones are we talking about?
I don't know, I, I put that as a question.
Yeah, that was a question.
What zones are, is this permitted in?
I mean, I, I assume it was in R 45.
Because it references chapter 155, but, but then it, I didn't see a table in here myself.
The idea is that if it is, all right, that's an important distinction, but...
This is all because of...
I couldn't see how it would be a problem on, on a commercial road like 55, so I have to presume that what the board is, is doing is preventing commercial use in residential neighborhoods.
Is it a...
Is, am I... I think a bit more of like the accessory apart, it's, we see, when we had the, before we had an accessory apartment law, people were having, they'd put two or three apartments in a house, and then the neighbors would go nuts, and then, so we made the law, the law was dealing with these issues in the residential area, so it was saying, all right, you can have it, but we're gonna put, you know, we're gonna have it, it's, it's not gonna be a multifamily house, it's going to be for your mother-in-law, it's gonna be for your son, and, and the law is, is, the parameters of law are built that way, so that it can't be, you know, it's gotta be subordinate to the house, it can't, you know, so it's, the way I'm reading it, it's kind of in line with that, it's trying to make it consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Right. That's exactly it.
So if somebody doesn't like your mother-in-law, you're in deep doodoo.
I guess not, because that references 155, which now... Well, well, no, because in an accessory apartment district, arrangement is not a conflict. Rob is in one portion of the house with his wife, and then the mother-in-law is in the accessory apartment. That is permissible under, under this change, if, if this change goes through, when it goes through.
Okay, we've got a clarification for you here. In the, in the section of 155 that would be amended, it says hosted short-term rentals shall be permitted in any single-family dwelling in all zoning districts within Towne of Beakman.
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
Hosted short-term rentals shall be permitted in any single-family dwelling in all zoning districts within the town.
Right.
So it has to be a single-family residential dwelling, which could be potentially in, even in a commercial zone, you're talking about commercial zones, whatever.
That's the only place where it's an issue, because if it's in a multifamily dwelling, it's already a multifamily.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, but it's also, it's also if...
It has to be hosted.
That's...
What it's saying, what it's saying, what it's saying is, is if you inherit your sister's house, you're gonna have to go through this if you wanna do it on a, if you wanna do a short-term rental on your sister's house.
But he has to...
Has absolutely...
No, I have to move into the house and make it my primary residence.
He'd have to move into that house. Right, it has to be your primary residence.
It's just like an accessory use apartment. You have to live there and...
Rent out the...
A portion of the house, or if there's an accessory structure, maybe that, that's allowed, but...
No, it's not, it has to be within the principal building.
It's gotta be within the principal, oh.
Which is, which is what our accessory apartment has to be within the principal structure as well.
Right.
It has to be connected.
You're not gonna build a, a little...
So if you have like a house and a garage with a nice apartment on the top, the garage is separated from the house, you can't have that Airbnb up there. Another example of what has occurred recently is somebody pitched some tents in the backyard, and it was used as an Airbnb destination. That's what this is trying to put back. Here you have, there's, they're cooking back there, you know, they're...
Depot Hill?
But, but now, you're turning though Depot Hill into a commercial land, when it's not. You know, if you permit these people to buy land and, and, I mean, they could buy Depot Hill, they could come before us, and they could open up a camp, but we'd have to approve the location and the, the use. This situation, I could, if I was your next-door neighbor, pitch some tents in my backyard, ask people, put it on a website, and it could be a revolving door, people up all night, making fires, eating, drinking beer. Another example would be, if I moved and I had my, my building sitting there, my house sitting there, I could, every weekend, rent my home out to college kids' house, right? On spring break. This is, this is what's actually happening now. It's not happening in Beakman, but it is happening in other towns, and it's big business, you know? So, I mean, in general, I, I, it's permitting it pretty much throughout the town. Yes. But it's regular. Yes. And so I, I don't necessarily have a problem, other than the fact that we have difficulties with enforcement. We don't have, we're adding another law that's adding more responsibilities onto a department that doesn't have enough time to do what we're doing. Well, we did, maybe you don't know, but there's a full-time inspector and, and she also code enforcement. Okay, and she's full-time? Full-time. Oh, great, okay, so that's the answer to that. So I don't, I don't think this is... And so, I don't necessarily have a problem, other than the fact that we have difficulties with enforcement, we don't have, we're adding another law that's adding more responsibilities onto a department that doesn't have enough time to.
Well, we did, maybe you don't know, but there's a full-time inspector, and she also code enforcement.
Okay, and she's full-time?
Full-time.
Oh, great, okay, so that's the answer to that. So, I don't, I don't.
Rob, my concern is, my concern is that what this is going to do is, if I don't like my neighbor, it's going to give me the opportunity to, lack of a better way of expressing it, make things difficult for my neighbor, okay? And my concern, my concern is, is.
You mean if he rents out, if he's, if he's.
Under any, under any, under any.
Under any circumstances.
Under any circumstances. You have to understand that, or I have to understand, that we're talking a new generation of people.
And this is a new business of that generation.
And this is, and when I say a new generation of people, and that's what I mean, I'm going to say the age of thirty-five and under.
Yeah.
Okay, and it just, because I'm older, I have difficulty absorbing, I have difficulty absorbing this, and I'm wondering if we are putting in too much regulation.
I agree with, I actually, I agree with you on that. You and I grew up in a, in an area where if there was a problem with your neighbor, you talked about it with him.
Yeah.
He didn't just run to the town and then start complaining immediately, and you worked it out amongst yourselves, and you didn't have to have government involved. And we're starting to see with a lot of our applications, that anything anybody is proposing on their own property is a no-no. People are objecting to every single thing.
And I don't think that, and Rob, I don't think that that's right. And, yes, you do, you do have to, you do have to have regulation, I mean, that's why the heck we have laws. It's for the general, basically for the general populace, but I'm concerned, my concern, I guess, is are we becoming overly, overly regulated?
So, alright. Thirty Airbnb nightmares shared by top travel bloggers. Alright, now, you started off the conversation talking about the new generation. This is a whole new product. I've never stayed in an Airbnb. No, you haven't. I don't know whether you have, Rob. You have, alright. Now, it's, I could, I could go through this, alright, but Croatian family holiday ruined by scary, threatening downstairs neighbor. Alright, shady, likely intoxicated host and filthy location, guests relocated.
But that's the host.
Yeah, goes both ways, trust me. Three individual Airbnb failures, guests give up. I could, I could type into the search a reverse of this, and you're going to see horrific stories about houses being burned down, parties that go into a mosh pit slash spring break party. We had a young lady die in Beekman, leaving a party that was at an unhosted Airbnb.
But that could have been a party in.
In a vacation rental, or regular.
It could have.
Or it didn't even have to be a rental, it could have been, it could have been a party.
Yes.
By the owner, by the landowner.
It could have been, it could have been, it could have been coincidental.
So, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that we can't just respond to every one person who has a problem with their neighbor, you know, like, still, someone has to look out for owners' rights of their own property, and their right to do certain things on their own property. But, I mean, to answer your question, if that person has a problem with the guy next door who's going to give them a hassle, the guy next door does have a process to make it legal, and to say to the other person, you can complain all you want, I got my permit, you know.
Right, and then there's also references to the noise regulations and everything in there, too, so if, if one of these houses starts to become a little more of a nuisance to the neighborhood, thank you, then the building department would have the right to be able to go and rip their permit from them.
Yeah, alright, so, there's something. And really, you know, at the end of the day, we're either going to make no comment, say yes, say no.
I'm sure the town, I'm sure the town board is going to look at this discussion that we're having right now.
Yeah, right, yes, probably, but it's not, it's really not within our, our scope to influence the board one way or the other.
Yes, it is.
Actually.
You're providing, you're providing a non-binding advisory opinion.
A non-binding advisory opinion. It is a long way of saying that it's an opinion.
My only other concern is that this may be, the way this is written, might be prohibiting the, prohibiting that use by a thousand cuts, like, there's so many regs in here that it might be almost impossible for someone to meet these. Is there a venue to, to get a variance on any of these, or waiver? Is there any ability for that? Like, I'm not going to reconstruct my whole house just because I want to rent a room, you know, if it doesn't meet like, pretty onerous, you know, standards.
But if you were to rent a room, would you be in the house?
No, and that I.
Boy, it's got to be.
Yeah, you will be, right. And so, this law that.
That helps keep it safe by having the primary resident being in the house.
That's what the intent is, I believe.
So, it.
It makes them more involved.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't be restricted in that circumstance.
No, but they actually have standards here, they're saying, one person shall contain at least seventy square foot of floor area, and every bedroom in a short-term rental occupied by two persons shall contain at least a hundred, what if I don't have a hundred square foot? You know, like, you know, I don't know if these, I haven't really studied this long enough to know, if this is too onerous to be, if I'm applying for this, and I'm looking at this, I'm like, there's conflicting things, like, there's no way I can have that and this.
This is what I like about it.
Hey, Rob?
Because imagine somebody running one of these next to my house on Roosevelt Drive, not that it could happen, because in the subdivision, you have the HOA that would restrict all of this immediately anyway. But if I owned a private property on Baker Road, and you were my neighbor, and I said, you know what, I'm going to go move to Manhattan, right, and I'm going to, I'm going to advertise this on Airbnb, and every weekend, I'm going to have, you know, a new rental there.
No, that's what's good about the law, is that it makes sure you can't just leave the house and do that. I agree with that.
And that's the character of the neighborhood, as you can.
Well, not only that, but more important, the value of my house, the value of your house.
But what about the right of the person who wants to be able to rent a part of his house?
Or the whole house.
He wants to be, no, no, he can't rent the whole house, because he's, well, I guess if he's going to live with them in the house.
He can, as long as it's over thirty days. This is to only restrict short-term use, weekend, vacationers, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm just saying, what about the person who wants to have an Airbnb?
Yeah.
Is this too onerous? Does this effectively prohibit him from having, by having too many parameters?
In a residential neighborhood, it does. I think if you wanted to buy, like, for example, right behind Cumberland Farms, alright, there's a plot of land that has a deed restriction on it, you can only have a single-family home there. And it's the third lot in on the right, probably right across from the library, a little bit down. Now, that's commercially, that's commercially zoned area, right? Someone could buy that, they could build a house on it, and they could probably make it an Airbnb, I suppose, right then, if they came before us?
I'm sorry, is there a?
If, if in a commercially zoned area, they could buy a home, and it could be an Airbnb, as long as.
As long as it's a single-family dwelling.
As long as it's a single-family dwelling, and you could create a business there and utilize it as often as you'd like.
But you'd have to be a primary resident, though.
Oh, even in a commercial?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, wow.
And if you work in commercial, had a single-family, you'd be the primary resident.
You still have to be the primary resident.
Okay, so I misunderstood. I didn't realize.
Yeah, I mean, if you go through the 126.1-7 subsection E, that's the conditions and restrictions I think you're talking about, Rob?
Yeah.
I think a lot of them, you know, make sense, like, I mean, if you're like a thirteen, you can't rent your hot tub out just to somebody, you know what I mean? It's like, you know, or a non-habitable structure. Well, that, that's good, because we don't want people to be in a non-habitable structure and then die, you know, you know. Talks about the meals in there.
But what about habitables? Here's my problem. Let's go, let's go with that one.
Yeah.
What about a habitable? I have a garage that has a insulated space above it, and it's, I could make it, it has electrical, it meets all the, meets all the codes for habitable space, but it's not connected to my house. So, why is that limited out?
No sign.
I believe it is.
So, you don't rent it, so what you do is, I'll.
I don't vote for the law.
No, I'll live there, I'll, I'll live there for two weeks.
Thirty days.
And when I leave, I'll give you a donation.
I don't want a donation, I want it like my business.
He wants, he wants to do Airbnb and put it on AirNet.
I'm not saying I do, I don't want it, but I'm just saying, if someone wants to do that, we've limited it to their personal house.
And say, in that situation, you live in the accessory apartment there, if they're in the primary residence?
Well, I, I think the law should be modified to allow for an accessory use structure that meets the code, the New York State Building Codes, a habitable space, as long as it's within the same parcel. I don't see why that, you know, that should be included. It shouldn't be within the primary structure. It shouldn't be limited to the primary structure.
Good point.
Now, solid waste facilities to handle solid waste, including, how are they supposed to demonstrate that? Do they have to go to the, are we going to require them to go to the Board of Health? We know what that's about, we know what, how onerous that could be. So, that's number nine.
Yeah, but if you put, if you put in, in your case, if you were building an accessory apartment.
It's garbage. Solid waste, solid waste is garbage, yeah.
Oh, oh, so that's just making sure he's got garbage cans and stuff.
Yeah, including recycling.
I was thinking of sewage.
Yes, that might be something in here, too.
So, people obviously have rented out for habitation, storage sheds, garages.
It's number four there.
It's your number of bedrooms.
So, it's based on the number of bedrooms, that the septic system, septic systems approve for a certain number of bedrooms.
Well, I think that's okay, right?
Yeah.
If you buy a house, you're banning the fire that COs and C.
It's a whole new thing.
Yeah, if you only had a septic that can accommodate three bedrooms, and those three bedrooms are being used in the primary residence, and so there's a fourth bedroom, now we're overloading the septic.
Right.
And it's a tangible parameter.
Public health and safety issue.
You don't need an.
Cliff, you have to weigh in on this, Conservation Advisory Board.
Yeah, they're just seeking a report from the planning board. That's really what it is. And you guys gave Airbnb way too much credit, because there's a whole bunch of other sites.
HomeAway.
HomeAway, Verbo.
HomeAway, TripAdvisor.
I just, I just looked at Verbo.
Yeah. Alright, well, I'm inclined to be okay with the law, as long as they, I'm in general accordance with the law, but I do think they need to look at the, the conditions a little more carefully to make sure that they're not too onerous. Can I make that suggestion?
Do you make any suggestion you want?
Absolutely.
It depends whether they're going to, depends whether they're going to pay attention and listen to it.
Yeah.
So, what do you suggest, I'm sorry, that they look, I just want to write.
I'd like to, if you guys agree, I'd like to say, we're in general concurrence with the new law, but we would like them to look at the conditions a little more carefully to make sure there's no onerous conditions, too onerous that it limits someone's ability to, you know, even attempt to make the application.
So, how about before you gave approval, you gave them that comment, and then we let them, let the town board come back to us?
I mean, it's just our recommendation to the town board.
They're not obligated.
They don't have to listen to it, right?
No.
No, they don't, no.
There's no obligation on their part.
It'd be good if they would reconsider those conditions and make, if there's anything that's too onerous that they omit.
Okay. Do you have any specifics you want to?
Well, the one about having to be in the primary residence.
Yeah, I wrote that down.
I, I would say that, so if someone has, I, you know, I have a garage next to my house, a lot of people have that, they have an access, what they call an accessory use structure, and there's a habitable space above it, but that would be immediately eliminated out, and why should it be? If, if it meets the town, if it meets the building codes, and it's a habitable space, I think it should also be considered. So, I don't want the law to limit it to the primary structure.
Now, I had nothing to do with the writing of this law, but I, I would probably suggest that the reason that might be a concern would be if you have a large piece of property, and you're staying in your primary house here, but there's a garage or barn structure, eight hundred, nine hundred, a thousand feet away, something like that, you might not hear what's going on over there, and it could be actually a big party going on. I think that, I think that was probably the intent, I'm just, I'm only presuming.
But if the big party is going on in your house, what are you going to do?
I guess you have to shut it down. You're the owner.
Alright, try to shut the party down.
Well, that's, that's, that's the whole point.
If it's that thing, alright, so let's take this to the next step. If it's that big of a property, that they have this house somewhere in the middle of the, how is it impacting somebody else?
It might not, it might not. Yeah, I mean, who knows?
That's all the situations where.
That might dictate if you're, you know, the fifty, finding your parcel, and.
See, there's always going to be those issues, right, where like the law lands somewhere in the same.
Not everything's always black and white, right?
That's where the discretion of the approval of the permit comes in.
Now, I mean, I think too, as far as parties go, you know, big, we're talking big parties, it is limiting the amount of guests you can have in your building as well to.
That's true.
To, to adults per bed, to per bedroom, or to, to people over the age of five per bedroom.
If it's a hundred square foot or more, the bed, for the room itself, which isn't, that's not too big.
Yes, right.
Limiting how many people.
Right, so if you're a three-bedroom house, you can't.
So, that's what that protects.
Right.
That's true, that's true.
You can't seat twenty people into your, your three or four-bedroom house.
Yeah, I mean, our laws have accounted for everything except these, and, you know, bed and breakfasts, hotels, these types of things, there are provisions for.
That's, you know, that's why we had to put a solar law, and things, things change.
My problem.
Zoning from nineteen-eighties doesn't make as much sense sometimes.
There's two ways of looking at this, at the point of view of the property owner, and then the point of view of the, of the neighbors. I'm, I'm mostly concerned about the neighbors, alright, because I would never do that to my house. I would sell my house, and if I was interested in getting in bed and breakfast business, I would open up a bed and breakfast, and, you know.
That would be the best bed and breakfast in the world.
It would. No, no one, no one would even come close.
The details, the details.
No one, my wine would be served. Right off the bat.
With a dog and every.
I would cook for them.
Five things, five things.
The dog and the rug, I mean.
But if somebody, if somebody opened up an Airbnb next to my house right now, alright, I'd be banging on Mary's door, alright? And that is the truth. This is the problem. And so, I, I like a restrictive law, quite in this, in this regard.
What's the effect of this going to be on a project proposal such as was proposed by Sally?
The apartment.
That's an apartment complex.
That's an apartment complex.
Yeah, that wouldn't be. Yeah, that wouldn't be, it has to be a single-family dwelling.
Those are already apartments. We'd rather it be This has to do with you, you coming, you, you moving into another home, another town, and you're gonna rent your house out to whomever every weekend.
Okay, in, in this proposal, is there time limitations as far as
Thirty days.
Less, less than thirty days.
Thirty days or less?
I believe that's what it is.
Yep, so the tenant
Fewer than thirty consecutive days.
You could rent your house out, but it would be to a long-term, long-term rental.
'Cause once, once you go over thirty days, you could, there'd come a month, a month tenant.
Right.
Peter, you're right, I mean, even a, even a month, a month tenant could become a nightmare for somebody.
Right. That's why, that's why, that's why I never, never wanted to own
Right.
Yeah.
Something to rent, because it can be, it can become a nightmare.
But that's not the condition we're addressing. The problems that are occurring that's resulting in this assessment of this is because of these weekend rentals and the less than thirty And I believe the law specifies that the rent, the advertisement for the rental is occurring on one of these, these
It could be any kind of advertisement.
There'll be a colloquial term for this, other than Airbnb.
What, who, you know
Short-term rental.
Right, it would primarily probably be online at this point.
Online, yeah.
But, I mean, it is any advertising
Any advertising mechanism.
Somebody wants to get it out in paper, they could.
Right, yeah.
I doubt anybody under thirty-five is reading the paper for
Exactly.
short-term rental, but you're right, it's any, it's any, any kind of advertising.
Depends, it may, it may work with a penser. Think about it, a silver light Seventeen-year-old, no one looks for a penser. All these houses around Silver Light, all right? That would be an ideal location, you have Silver Light there, you've got a house there. It could become an attractive nuisance, I mean, not an attractive, it would become a nuisance. It would become a nuisance that is unlegislated, with no restrictions. That's the problem that they're trying to resolve. I just, there's large landowners out there that might have a little cottage on their property that, up until we did this law, they were operating without any problems of anybody, and now all of a sudden, they're like, what did I do wrong? I just, all I, I did everything right, and I just happened to have this large lawn, and they're really singling me out when they shouldn't be, you know, so
So should there be a grandfather?
Well, then you, I think, have to go to
That's
previous uses. Were people already doing this, and how do you show that?
Yeah, but you're gonna, the situation that Rob is mentioning
Well, I, no, I'm just, I'm still agreeing with that we, I'm in concurrence with this law, because that person with the large lawn, I just don't want it to be too onerous for that guy to abide the law when he was always doing the right thing with the tenant. That's all. All right, so I'll make a motion for that to be our recommendation. Maureen, did you get that done?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Do you want her to read it out again? 'Cause I don't want to have to
No, I've been listening, I've been listening to what you say, and, and, look, I figured the town board is gonna be looking at whatever is being recorded.
Right.
Okay?
And that's where they'll get their input.
And, and I feel that's where they should get their input. I don't
We don't necessarily have to, yeah. All right, okay, well, that's how we feel. Respond one way or another. Do you think we need to provide a formal recommendation to them, or?
No, not necessarily, you could, you could direct them to, to our heads or for the
The formal recommendation should be that they should listen to the webcam in this meeting discussing the proposed law.
Right. Okay.
Again, just, I just wanna clarify, 'cause I misspoke in the beginning, it's been a long day, that it's not, it's not looking to prevent this, it's just that it's looking to regulate.
Regulate, yeah. And there's always chafe, you know, I mean, not chafe, that would be the incorrect word. There will always be an anomaly that is affected negatively, but I think history has proven, and, and the history has only existed for about five, six years, I would say, with this occurring, and it mostly occurs in vacation areas, and we don't live in a vacation area at all, that there's been a lot of negative things that have come because of the lack of regulation in these, in these homes, in these vacation communities. And, and you wouldn't think, Beekman, as small as we are, what, twelve thousand?
Fourteen.
Fourteen thousand?
Yeah, that's with the prison population, let's clarify.
Is it? Includes them?
Oh, yeah, the prison population is included.
Agricultural community, right, for the most part, and we would have to deal with any of these issues, yet in about ten minutes, I heard of three horrific examples that's being dealt with by, by our town. It's remarkable, but I don't, you know, I think the problem is that the type of short-term rental that we're gonna see here versus, say, in a shore town, you know, is, it's gonna be a problematic thing, you know, you're not gonna, it's not gonna be somebody who is taking the weekend off with their family to enjoy Right, right. You know, that's, that's the issue, market.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you.
Well, there's an extension first.
Oh, okay, one more.
Now, so I'll just give you the very brief. Elena is still dealing with some issues with the Water, Waste Water Authority and another engineering firm that's doing pump station calculations and improvements. So, they've asked for another extension. They're actually still good right now through September twenty-seventh, based on their last extension. So technically, this could even be done next month, but they've asked for an extension in anticipation, so normally what we'll do is either a ninety or two sets of ninety. So, they, they have been making effort, they did, they did submit additional information to us with regard to some of our resolutions of, of the conditional approval, so they're making headway.
Right.
But the problem is still with the water and waste?
Yeah, part of it is, the Plum Court Pump Station is in requirement of some improvements.
Yep.
They, I believe what has, had to happen was they had to set money for the Water, Waste Water Authority to hire an engineer and firm to do the design, so it's kind of out of their hands on how fast that engineering firm gets the answers that they need to make those improvements, so.
And your recommendation is?
It's, at this point, I'm not necessarily concerned, because they've been making progress still, and they're, they're staying in contact with us, it's not, it hasn't been any kind of abandonment, and, so
Okay.
Had they not been making effort, you know, I would tell you
So do you wanna give an extension, the next meeting?
You could if you want, or we could just do it now and take one item off for next month, next month, being that we're already talking about it, so it's up to you guys.
I'm okay with doing it now. Yeah, I am.
So it'd be a ninety, twenty, ninety-day extension after the
From September twenty-seventh.
Right.
So
Either one ninety-day or two ninety-days.
A ninety-day would give you till December twenty-sixth, two ninety-days would give you until March twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three.
I think, I think in light of the fact that they're, they're making effort, they're not languishing, they're not the result of the delay, that it's powers beyond their control, and they seem to be moving, they're motivated to get this done, I'm willing to make a, a motion to extend it by two ninety-day periods. Do you accept, or then Pete? It's your decision.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who's second? You made that, and he's second?
George.
Pete.
Pete.
Pete, George, Pete?
Two. So that'll take them through March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Yes.
March twenty
Six.
Yep.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three.
Are we off camera?
No, you have to adjourn first.
All right, I'll move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we, are we